So you've heard the saying it takes a village?
Yes.
Well, this is our village on landscape assessment districts. And so, good evening to the mayor, vice mayor, and city council members. Tonight's study session will really walk you through, hopefully, through a very complex system and process. And our goal is to kind of break that down a little bit. We have a sample district we're going to look at. We have a sample property tax bill, how that's broken out. So you're going to get a lot of context of this. So with me up here today is Frank Centeno, Utilities and Engineering Director, Russ Sterling, Public Works Director, Destiny Borba, Acting Finance Director, Levi Weinbrenner, our Parks Manager, and I believe Jim McGuire with Wildan Financial may be coming on the call virtually at some point here real soon. And many thanks to everybody at this table and interim City Manager Tivares for just kind of putting all the brains together and to bring this presentation. We have about five recommendations we'll make at the end, kind of how we see moving forward for council's direction. So, we named it LADs Past, Present, and Future. So buckle up. So, the past. Just a quick timeline of how we arrived here. Back in 1990, we actually established our first LAD. It was District 9001, Pine Castle, units one through four. At the time, and you'll hear us talk about this in a little while, when those first LADs were established, there was no escalator to raise with inflation as water, utility, and maintenance costs go up. At the time, there were no ways of increasing assessments. And we'll get into, there's really only one way legally to be able to increase. So it's not been because we didn't want to. There's rules and regulations that dictate that. So in 2002, 12 years later, we began building that escalator in. And each year, it changes a little bit as the CPI changes. This last year was 2.1. Years prior, it might have been a little bit higher, a few tenths higher. So that's when we started implementing that. In 2020, now up to 2021, we completed the Engineers Report internally. And that was done at the time through our Public Works Department in Engineering. 2021, we kind of came to a crossroads and we decided to contract with Wildan Financial to not only prepare the Engineers Report, but also for consulting services. You know, again, knowing the big goal is to find solutions for deficient LADs. And in 2024, we implemented the CFDs, or the Community Facilities District. So in reality, we will not add any more LADs. It is all CFDs moving forward. So what we have to manage and what we're here today are those 43 districts that were landscape assessment districts. So that's just a little brief timeline of how we got here. The present current reality, you've seen this slide before, 43 districts, 11 of them are deficient. That means that they don't have the money in their fund balance to really fund their improvements, their utilities, and all of that. 17 of the districts do have the escalator, and we'll get into the Engineers Report. But that's just the map. Again, most of them are on the perimeter of the city where we've seen growth in the last, you know, 20, 25 years. And so, all the districts are numbered. The first, the second number is the year, and the first number is that when that district came aboard in that year. So you may have 0118. And so that was the first district in 2018. Okay? Don't get confused with fund numbers, because those are a different number, okay? And they also have names. So you have a district number, a fund number, and a name. Okay? And we'll walk you through that, because in the Engineers Report, there's two pages of spreadsheet with, I think I counted 13 columns going across, and it gets like bewildering. But we're going to break that down. So, a few frequently asked questions. What is an LAD, right? It's a landscape assessment district. It's designed as a neighborhood or development where homeowners pay an annual assessment to fund for the care and maintenance of the shared landscaping areas. We're going to show some pictures of what that looks like. How are they funded? So each home within that LAD is assessed a fee annually, and that amount is determined when the district is established, generally by the developer at the time. So type of improvements, number of homes in that development, is there a park in the district, is there not a park? All of those factors figure into a calculation of how they're funded. And that is set basically before anybody even moves in to the neighborhood. So you kind of inherit that if you're a new homeowner. And we'll have a sample here in a minute. So, why are some of the LADs underfunded? Why do we have deficit LADs? There's a lot of factors, and we have 11 of them. As we mentioned, those 11 do not have a CPI escalator. So they get further and further in the hole, and other than balloting, there's no way to get out of that hole. Two, of course, the cost of maintenance has steadily increased over the years as the cost of utilities continues to rise. So those are things working against us. And without the corresponding revenue increases, service levels had to be reduced over time. About a year and a half ago, we took a real hard look and we started reducing the level of service in some of our LADs. And some of them are literally getting no services. And I don't think anyone here would agree that's a good look on the city, on the aesthetics of the city as you drive by. So we absolutely want to get out of these situations. As mentioned in the last bullet, they're so underfunded that basically we cannot, we cannot afford to do services. So, and in the Engineers, that's called the triple X level of service. So we have levels A, B, C, D, and F, and triple X. And triple X is like zero. So water's been cut off, electricity's been cut off, no maintenance. So you could just imagine over time, especially, you know, during our hot summers, what those landscape areas will begin to look like if they don't already look that way. So that's the, I guess, the consequences of deficient LADs. Okay, so how can we change this? By law, there's only one way, and it requires a majority vote of folks who live in that district. And without voter approval and balloting, by law, we cannot increase the assessments. So that's really, I think, kind of our challenge statement right there. How are we gonna do these, go to these districts, and ask people to voluntarily vote for higher taxes, higher property taxes? And sometimes, it's an education, because I'll show you an example that breaks down to a single homeowner paying a little over $12 a month. And so you, you break it down kind of a little bit into the granular that, okay, for, you know, I just make this up, for $10 a month, you can go from a triple X to a C maybe. And I think you have to speak that way to the homeowners, because that's reality, and that's, that's, they base their budget, right? And so that will be a big piece when we go out to do our marketing campaign. So, we picked a sample district. And, and we did this because actually, one of my staff members lives in this district, as does someone else. But, and this is, we're just going to break it down by this, because it's better just to take one of 43 and just say, let's just take this and kind of look at it, and because my staff member agreed to give me their property tax, because I wanted to show you an actual example of it. So this is District 0403, Cambridge Homes. It bordered 12th to the west, Fargo to the north. No really street dividing. I actually drove through there this morning. Overall, a pretty nice district overall, I would say. I'm not an expert, but you know, just looking at the medians, looking at the mow strips, looking at the trees, there's a lot of trees in this district. This district does have the Vineyards Park, which is classified as a neighborhood park. So rather small, it's just, I think, 2.01 acres. Small little walking path, a play structure, some benches, pretty basic, but a place for folks to be outside and run around. Not all of our districts have parks. Not all of our districts have parks. And here's an aerial shot of the boundaries of this particular district. So you can see, it's very well defined geographically. So this is our sample district. So, some photos. So, these are actually street views off of Google's map. You see the Vineyards Park on the top left there. This is just one portion of the park. You can kind of see the open space kind of out to the right. On the upper right is from Fargo Avenue. You've got a mow strip, you've got a sidewalk, you've got some hedges, some shrubs, and some trees. Very typical that front roads, okay? 12th Avenue, bottom left, very similar in the design. You've got your mow strip, your hedges and your trees. And then on Fitzgerald, which is not a bordering street, kind of goes right through the middle of this district. More trees, a little bit different type of shrubs. So these are just samples of what you would see and what the maintenance of these areas entail. So this is just a sample, and this is very common among most of our districts. So, here's our tax bill. And it breaks it all down, and we're not here to talk about, you know, all the assessments in the school districts and all of that. The highlighted portion kind of midway through, Hanford 0403 L and L, which is lighting and landscaping, okay? So this particular homeowner is assessed $154.10 a year. Their total property tax is 462590 in the bottom right. So their landscape assessment is about 3.3% of their total property tax. How is that? 154. How do we break that out, okay? 51% or $78.87 is for the contractual. Now, we currently contract with Clean Cut Landscape Services. They do all of the maintenance in all of our LADs currently. And we went out to bid a couple of years ago, and they were the lowest bid, and that's who we've chosen to go with. You see, 18% of that, or almost $28, goes to utilities of that 154. 7.2%, a little over $10, go to city service allocation to kind of help administer the LADs. And then the remaining amount, or 24%, 3649, remains and added to the fund balance. And we're going to go through all those columns here right now. But I wanted to break out the 154, and this is how it is allocated throughout the fund. In trouble? No? Okay. Thought we triggered an alarm. Okay, so this is a very filled slide. Up on top, I pulled this right out of pages, I think 23 of the Engineers Report. This is that spreadsheet, two pages you see with all the districts in all of these columns. And it's like, what the heck means what? So what we did is we kind of went through and tried to define those columns just to gain an understanding of kind of what they mean. And I'm not going to bore you with reading every single one of these. It was in your staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. But you'll see the numbers going across, you have the fund number of the district, you know, the maintenance incidental, all of those things. And this is how they craft the Engineers Report. Now, the, correct me now, Destiny, the beginning fund balance is estimated?
The beginning fund balance is the reconciled balance as of 6/30/24. And then this, the Engineers Report, is the budget information for fiscal year '26. So it's not including the activity that actually occurred in fiscal year '25. So that's why there's sometimes a lag between, or between the numbers that ending of this Engineers Report to the beginning of next year's report.
Thank you. Okay. So that gives you, hopefully, some context and some background and things as we move forward. Every year in June, July, we come before the council with a public hearing. We have to get all of our assessment rolls to the county by August 9th annually, so we can get included in, in those, in the tax rolls. And we just recently, of course, went through that process with resolution and acceptance of the Engineers Report and all of that. But that's kind of the annual cycle or timing of the LADs. So based on that information, we've met together as a group, because again, this is a village. This touches a lot of different apartment, departments, and it can be fairly complex. Our recommendations is we would like to re-scope Wildan's agreement. In the past, we've entered into agreement with Wildan for the annual Engineers Report and professional consulting services. That agreement is roughly a little over 19,000 per year. It has been the last couple of years. With that, we're proposing to bring the annual Engineers Report to be brought back in-house to both Engineering and Utilities and the Finance Department. Because really, in reality, the Engineers Report is a finance report, right? An engineer has to sign it, but in real reality, it's more a numbers game, and that really is, you know, finance in our engineering departments. So, and they both have a kind of agreed to like, yes, we can do this. And remember, because we're not adding anymore now, they don't remain completely stagnant, but we have the good basis for, for all of the districts. So that's recommendation number two. Number three, our plan, our strategic plan to address deficient districts. With, again, the only way to do that is to ballot. Okay? So, one, analyze deficient districts, and we have a timeline, I have a better timeline on the next slide, or two slides. But let's really look at them, and what, what are needed in each of the deficient districts to get their level of service to improve, right? And again, they're all different. One may be a triple X like way under, and one may be a triple X barely under. So we have to take a good look. Two, and I think this is really key, develop an outreach and education marketing campaign to go to the districts. Postcards mailed directly to those districts. Engagement and block parties, and meeting them in their neighborhoods with pictures, with information, and explaining this to them. And I think really, most people aren't even aware they pay this assessment. So we feel that's really, really key. We've actually kind of spoken to some folks that specialize in educating and outreach in districts, okay? Then we need to execute it, right? And that would be done the first of the year. Again, we're all building up to ballot, which would be March, April, because we've got to be all ready to go and included in the Engineers Report to be able to get the process through to August 9th. So that's our recommendations of kind of a game plan for the deficient districts. Four, we have districts that have large fund balances, some of them six-digit. We have not done a great job of reinvesting back into those districts, and we need to do so. And so we're proposing, much like our capital improvement project, this would be a CIP just for districts. So we would develop that plan, and we would put it together. And in each district, we like to have a reserve threshold. We have not decided on what that threshold would be. Every day, something happens in a district. A car hits something, a light pole or a monument sign. And if that district doesn't have any money, like, you just let it be there? And, so you need to have reserve funds. But again, we have districts that have a healthy fund balance with a reserve. We now need to start reinvesting back into that district. We like to outreach, even though we're not mandated to, the property owners, so, you know, a postcard survey, what would you like to see in your district? More trees, more flowers, replace the play structure? Whatever the menu is, that way, they have a say on what those improvements are. And then, of course, we define the type and the extent and the cost, right? It's just, it's a CIP for the districts. And then, really, again, and this is carefully identify the true costs. So, a playground has a lifespan, right? And we need to calculate what that replacement is, if, let's just say it's a 12-year lifespan. We need to be putting capital reserve, I mean, reserve amounts in there, just like we do with vehicles now. So when the vehicle goes kaput, we have the money, because we've been saving for it over time. Same concept here, because things do have lifespans. And, you know, out in public, our parks get well-used and abused daily. And they're out there, and, and so they're under all the elements, the weather and the public. So that would be developing a CIP for those districts that are, are healthy financially. And then five, and, and why we're all here together today really, is create and establish what we call an LAD working group of all of us that touch this. And, you know, there's all the, the departments that would be involved with this, because in some ways, it touches all of us. And it's important that we're all on the same page, we're all speaking the same numbers, and we're all really clear, because Levi's Parks guys may be out and he gets a question from a landowner, right? Or, and Levi deals with Clean Cut directly, there may be questions of them on, okay, we increase the level of service, that's going to increase your frequency that you go out and maintain. So it really does touch the big group here, and we realize we, we just have got to improve on our internal communication. And so this is recommendation five. Last slide, I promise. It's just a timeline. It just goes a little bit over in a timeline of what we feel to ballot the deficient LADs. Now, there's some debate, I think, on how many districts do we want to ballot? Do we want to ballot all 11? That, that's a big load, because they're all different. You've got postcards going out, that's not hard. But when you start physically going out and explaining times 11, it becomes, I think, challenging. And each of the districts, again, are a little bit different. So the numbers are going to change by district, and the education will change by district. So, again, you know, do you say, we're gonna ballot half of them, or six of them, or seven of them? And that has to be determined pretty quickly. About four, five years ago, council took on this item, walked the districts in the summertime, knocked on doors, and we did not get one district to ballot for increased It's, it's a hard sell. It just, it is. So that's kind of our, our challenge statement a little bit. I think with getting the right firm in line that knows this, that can do it, that can explain it well and clearly and concisely in plain English, will be really important. And I think you have to do it visually, you have to do it verbally, and you've got to also try to get your influencers within those districts to help you. And those are the folks that are out in front of their house a lot, who knows everything about that district, right? Who's coming, who's going, who belongs where? We all have them. And if we could get some of those influencers as proponents, I, I think that would help, because they're going to trust their neighbor over us coming out, right? You're, you're, you're the city, right? So I, I think it's real important that we have this multi-prong approach somewhat to do that. So that's the background. That's the context, the questions. We tried to break it down to explain it to the council, because I think it's important to have this information to make really good, informed decisions. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
First of all, Brad, thank you, and the team, thank you for bringing this to the forefront and educating us on how, this is a very super-complex issue. I've learned, it seemed like, once, you know, somebody's like, what about my neighborhood? And then you get into this rabbit hole, and then you just, you just learn and learn. And first of all, in full disclosure, the, the example is my neighborhood as well. So I, I just wanted, full disclosure, that this is, this is where I live as well in that example. Just really quickly, the ballot for the deficient, the deficient fund balances, there's 11 of them, but we have 17 without CPI escalators. Is that also being considered as well? Because ideally, it'd be nice to have everybody on an escalator where there's, and I know it's, it's a hard sell. I mean, it's, no one wants to raise their own taxes, but when they start seeing that it affects their property, you know, values and their neighborhood?
I think 11 would be a bold number. 70. 17 would be an outrageous number, is my opinion, managing the outreach in that. So I guess we could see this as a phase one.
Yeah, I was gonna say maybe.
Maybe multiple phases into future years. Maybe we go over some very identified deficient ones. This year, we take that middle group and then maybe we take a third group sequentially over time. We're going to learn a lot this time around, right? There's going to be things that we didn't anticipate. We're going to get questions. And so I think this is going to be a learning opportunity, but our goal is to be successful in the balloting. That's the end game here is to be able to get those folks to ballot, to increase their assessments, so therefore their neighborhoods can aesthetically look better.
And it affects each one of our districts. Every single one of our districts, we have somebody that is either in the deficit or not, or not on an escalator. And so I've always been a proponent of like, let's roll up our sleeves and whatever we need to do to either walk precincts or whatever, how to get that information out. But it's just, you know, it's affecting every single one of our districts and members of the community are starting to see some districts that are, you know, hey, there's no flowers here that used to be, the plants are disappearing because they're dead, you know, and the watering schedules and all of that. So I'm going to open it up to council if council has any questions at this time for staff and we can proceed from there. But ultimately, we need to come up with some sort of direction for staff in the way that, in which way that we feel that they need to, they need to go. So Councilman Kyris, do you want to start off or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess the question I have for us, just up here, first and foremost is, and we've kind of heard during the presentation, we talk about level of service, right? What, what level of service are we looking to achieve? Okay, we have, we have LEDs right now, you know, they all get graded, right? A, B, C, D, F, and then triple X. So what image as a city that we want to see as a council to be able to give direction to staff, which will then help dictate to them on what needs to be done if, if the balloting, you know, council agrees that the balloting move forward? So before that, anything other comments I have? That's the question I have for my colleagues is, I mean, because to me, you know, I'm not a mediocre guy. I don't, I mean, just getting through the bare minimums for me, I think we're better than that. And I think, you know, when, when you start talking about these LEDs, I think it's important that, I mean, it's, it's the image of our community and what type of image do we want to project? So to my colleagues, I mean, to me, I think, just me personally, and I'm willing to have the conversation, but to me.
I'm on it right now.
A level B service would be our.
Minimum or maximum?
It's where we should strive to be. I think we, I think we need to strive to be in that. You might have some that may fall into a C level, but I don't think they should ever go below a C level, number one. You know, and if you can raise them up to get them into that upper, you know, A level service. But to me, B level service, Brad, if I remember correctly, that's, you know, that's weekly, you know, lawn cutting, it's, it's replacement of dead.
I was going to go over the level of services because if, Levi, if you want to go over level, because level A is weekly, correct?
Yes. Fundamentally, the level A service is weekly service. They come and do all of the landscaping necessary to maintain the space. The expectations are the same regardless of the level of service. They're still going to come out and serve the site the same way. The downside is the further you have gaps between services, more things can happen and detriments go to the site. So an A level service is 52 visits a year. Level B is 42 visits. We go every other week during the winter months where things are not growing as fast. Level C is 26 visits per year, every other week, all year long. Level D is monthly service during the winter months and every other week during the warmer months. Level E is once a month. This last year, we added in a level F, which is six visits per year. So essentially, every other month, there's actually a three-month gap in the winter, but the basics are there. And then the districts that were no longer able to sustain any contracted services have been rated that 3X rating. So it is discontinued service.
Okay, and so when you're saying the service, is that just the mow and blow and we're done? It's the edging? Is it the trimming of the trees? Is it replacing plants? I mean, according to the contract, you know, that we have with Clean Cut, what does that look like in addition to?
It's the basic landscape services, which includes clearing the right of way for tree branches that come below eight foot over sidewalks or 14 foot over streets. If it's reaching over somebody's fence, but it does not create a problem with either of those, it may not be part of the fundamental service and would be then an extra service beyond that. We don't have a annualized or a tree trimming schedule that is part of the contract. So any extras that would go beyond that is an extra service beyond that base contract. The base contract itself is the mowing, edging trees, plants, irrigation, and trash at the sites that have parks.
So it's mowing, edging, irrigation?
All the basic landscape services besides the regular tree trimming services that would be a five to a 10-year cycle depending on the species.
Now, what happens when a plant dies?
It gets removed.
It just gets removed? It doesn't get replaced?
Correct. Because a, it would be near impossible or extremely costly for the city to project losing a plant because now you have 10,000 square feet of plant space and some may die, some may not. So the landscaper is going to make sure that they incorporate all of those plants dying if they have to do that. When we added in the irrigation, there was a significant increase because originally that was not part of our base services.
Does Clean Cut check the irrigation every, every week?
I don't know about every week, but we have our internal staff that goes out and is doing spot checks on all of the sites and checking the irrigation for operations. It's not every single station, every single week. We have.
Our staff checks the irrigation, not Clean Cut.
Clean Cut has a irrigation tech that is assigned to our city that comes down and makes all the repairs for everything except for the backflows.
So that's include, so when we're talking level of service, 52 weeks, they're doing the mowing, the edging, the irrigation, the plant removal if there's a dead plant, and I missed something, I know, and the parks and the, also the railroads and frontage, et cetera. Okay. So as Councilman Kyris was saying, he's like at a level B. A level B is 42 weeks out of the year, which is during the winter months, it's every other week, correct? And during the summer months, it's every week. Yes, okay.
I have a question for you. The parks that you mentioned, you said that that assessment, it initially started with Pine Castle, which was in 20, in?
90.
90. That's what it's. Are, there's like Lacy Park, there's Co Park, there's Hidden Valley Park. Are those, are those included in this?
That's, that's, that's a city park.
It was, it was just a question. It was a question.
The neighborhood park is just the little parks inside the neighborhoods.
Okay, I just was clarifying.
And to speak to the Pine Castle one specifically, Sherwood Park is a park within the Pine Castle development, but it is not part of the Pine Castle Landscape Assessment District. So that is a city park, not a landscape or neighborhood park as part of a district.
And that's the same thing as with Quail Run Estates as well.
Correct.
The Quail Run, for some reason, it didn't get into the LED. And so the city operates that and that's a different budget. That's the parks budget as opposed to the LED budget.
Correct. And to clarify, we have Quail Park and we have Quail Run Estates, which also has a park within it. So it gets very confusing. But yes, the newest one on the north side of town, Quail Park, is a city park, whereas Quail Run Estates is in a district that is in the deficit.
Gotcha. So Councilman Kyris says level B. Anybody else think that it should be any other levels of service?
I think, I think it needs to be determined by the neighborhood because there may be some people that financially, it's going to be a little harder for them to maintain that level B, that level C might be sufficient to them. I mean, because there's, there's, there's different, there's different, there's going to be different, different levels of expectations depending on different levels of housing values is what I'm seeing. Some neighborhoods is going to be more important to them, some of them it's going to be less. And then whenever you're taking and talking about like $10 per household, I know it's going to depend on how many houses are in the neighborhood, correct? It may, you know, it may vary in everything on it. Some of the bigger neighborhoods that have, in a sense, their parks are fewer and far between, it may be, the cost may be lower on them. But I mean, ultimately, I feel like it's, it's at the discretion of the neighborhood people that are going to be voting on it. I mean, I feel, I feel.
I want to reclaim my time here, so, so I want to go back. So we need to, I think, first and foremost, decide what we want to this city to look like. What level of service do we as a council, are we going to agree on? Is it a C? Is it a D? Is it a triple X? What are we looking at? Because we can't give them direction without us telling. Now, I hear all the comments that are going on, which are our side conversations or next steps, but then I say to Brad, I say, you know, we talked about this, you know, previously going to the, to the LEDs and it not passing, right? So outreach, education and stuff is going to be critical. I'm going to tell you, I have, I have had three or four people in my district, I live in the country crossings area, and I've had people that live out there with me that they're like, when are you guys talking about this? When are you doing this? When, when is the vote coming? When, we're going to do some outreach in this community, we're going to go out. And so each, I agree with my colleague Kimber that each district might be a little different, but there are people in this community that are seeing the deficiencies in the landscaping and they want it improved. And, but again, it comes back to what do we, what are we looking to see? If you're saying a B, C level of service is okay, all right, we can have that conversation. But so to me, I go back to the educational side of it, right? This is going to be critical. And it's not only, I mean, I can tell you for my district and in the Landscape Assessment District that I'm, I live in, I personally am going to walk and hit the neighborhood and talk to those people, but, and I guess that's where I'm looking, kind of looking at Brad is like, how do you envision this? Because I really think we need to, you know, the outreach is going to be so critically important to get the message out because when we talk government lingo, LED, we know what you're talking about. The community doesn't. They don't have a clue what LED stands for. They, what they do know is when they drive out of their neighborhood and they see their dead trees and their dead bushes and then there's no grass in their, or the grass is, you know, full of weeds on their, you know, lawnmower areas between the sidewalk and the street. That's what they're seeing and that's what they're upset with because the quality is not there.
So, and I feel in my experiences and talking to members of my community, when they're asking about or complaining about the look of their neighborhood and you start explaining the LEDs, they're like, I never knew. I never knew. And as I believe you said at the beginning of your presentation, they don't even know when they see their property taxes that they're being taxed on that and whether that is, you know, video outreach incorporating Brian to, you know, or dissect each LED down and just say, hey, this is the thing. But to answer your question at first, I think it should be an A or B level of service. A or B level of service. But also that determines our, this district 0403, the Vineyards Park, it's been level A since its inception for the past 18 years. This is the first time that it dropped to a level B. And the reason why it's dropping to a level B, it's my understanding that in that neighborhood, we have a playground equipment that we need to replace, which is going to cost X amount of dollars, whether 75, $100,000, and we don't yet have that in our fund balance. And so over the next couple of years, we are going to be at a level B of service to recoup more of that money. And please tell me if I'm, I'm on the right track? Okay, good. And so those are some of the needs that we need to, but we also need a little, a lot more floral and tender loving care in like the entrances of our, our neighborhood where you just see divots of all the plants that were removed. And so that's where, you know, we're at. But I would like to see all of our districts because it affects our property values, the homeowners. And so the way those LEDs look, and so I think the standard that we should have is, you know, a minimum of a B, you know, and minimum of a B.
What I was going to say is whenever we're taking and getting out and explaining to people, they are going, there's going to be different people, different neighborhoods that are going to take and it's going to be more important to them than others. But what we need to really strongly emphasize to them is how the neighborhood looks is going to ultimately determine their property values and their property neighborhood desirability. So we need to take and get them to understand and that's what we need to push to them.
And I'm just doing, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions for you. What, how does this, I want to know like the nuts and bolts of how this would look like? Does it go on a ballot that's sent out? Is it on the general election? Like, I don't understand that portion of it.
So the balloting of the districts is, could be done, it's actually a paper ballot. And we, they mail those in and we literally count them during the council meeting.
Is it one per house?
It's a simple majority.
Is it one per house?
One per house. Property owner, renters, no, not eligible. So if you have an absentee owner and let's say there's a high level of rental units in a certain district, the renters cannot vote. It is a simple majority. So that's what you're, you know, is basically yes and no. Do the yeses outweigh the noes? And that's going to be different for each, for each district. So it's a little bit old fashioned and how they ballot, but that's what's required.
Well, then my next question would be, if there's 11 that are deficient, why wouldn't we just do that for all of them instead of just doing a few? Because like if you're already doing it for one, why wouldn't you do it for all? Because it's ultimately up to the property owners if they choose to go that way or not. So I don't even know how useful it is to spend too much time having this conversation right now about what level we want it at because it's not up to the five of us up here. It's up to the people who actually own houses in each LED. And why not just put all 11 out there and see what the people want? And obviously, I agree with everything everybody's saying about public outreach and understanding all of that, and that's something that we're perfectly capable of doing. Obviously, I would, I think everybody in this room would love everything to be an A, like we all want that. But I think we just need to focus on the facts and the reality that this is something that's up to the property owner. And I just say, go big and let's do it for all 11 that are deficient and see what happens and do our best job, public outreach and let the chips fall where they may.
Yeah, and, and I agree that ultimately it is the property owner's vote. I also understand Councilmember Kyris is kind of setting the bar or the vision. You know, if council said, guys, we want a level B, well, I don't know where I'll be when we get every district to a B, but I won't be sitting at this table. Hopefully, I'm above ground. It would be a hard, challenging endeavor. Because again, we have some triple Xs, right? That are at the bottom. To get to a B, to me, from a triple X to a C is, is, we're moving the right direction. And, and again, we're happy to ballot the 11. Just again, remember the focus, the energy, the weekends, the whole campaign for 11 districts in a, in a month or two period of time is going to be a challenge.
If you're doing it for one, what, I don't, I see you.
Because you have to go out to outreach at 11 different locations.
Correct.
Right? Several times. So again, council direction, if you want us to go and do our very best, we want some to pass this time, right? I mean, we need to. we want some to pass this time, right? I mean, we need to, um, know what that is and how did we get those to pass? And then we use that, you know, to move forward with it. Um, Jim at Willdan, um, we've had this conversation. He says 11 is a lot to tackle. It, it just is. Just because I think we all agree, the education and the outreach is the key. How do you message this effectively to get a yes vote? Really is the game. And we need to have one more yes and we do no.
Does Willdan do any, do they have any part in helping us with this? Is that part of our contract with them?
Yes. Willdan knows the mechanics. I think there are folks out in the community that might be more with the graphics and the visuals and that all has to be carefully orchestrated. So let's just say, we're going to send one initial postcard to each home in the district. Exactly, you get two sides and you got to have a space for the address. What does the one postcard? Is it a call to action? I'll meet you at the park on Saturday, this date at 10:00 AM? And we bring our boards and we show our pictures. You've got a front and back side. So that first post, postcard is critical, right? They may do what many of us do in the trash can. Yeah, whatever. Okay? Some might look at it and say, hey, I, I think I'd like to go to this meeting if that's the call to action. But I think you're going to have to meet people in person with pictures and explaining it to get the momentum to pass, my, my opinion. Again, it's been tried before and failed.
When was the last time it was tried?
Oh, four or five years ago, I believe. Four, I think four years ago. And it was a little bit later. It was in the summer months, probably a little behind what our proposed schedule is. And again, um, the economy has a lot to do with this. How are people feeling in general, right? They look at the city folks, city staff as, well, you're government, you're, you're the enemy. That's where that influencer, I think, concept can help a lot. And again, just the clarity of the message. And, and, and crafting that in a way, it's just very much like our campaign for Measure H. Very targeted, you know, the videos, the visuals, the art, all of those things went into the balloting of, of Measure H. Now, not to the scale, because we're very targeted on districts and.
Can I, can I jump in?
We, we can look at the districts, you know, we have new data that we never had in the past because Lacer AI is location analytics. We could geofence a district and I could tell you just about everything about that district. From median income, male, female, you know, everything about that.
And we have that in-house, correct?
Correct. We have a subscription. So we could, let's just say, geofence District A. And, okay, what does that look like? And by doing that, can we get more favorable mathematics or data and say, that's a district that we really need to go to? And let's say we have five of those or maybe we have eight of them. I, I, I don't know. And then we go put our energy into those. And again, with the goal of getting a passing ballot.
So current, so, so we're dealing, you know, I mean, here's a comment I'll make. We're, we're dealing with something that's been done many, many years ago that none of us had any involvement with, right? These LEDs were established. There were no escalators put in place. There was no vision that, hey, what are we going to do 20, 25 years from now when the electricity rates and the water rates and everything is going to be much higher? There was no thought into that. It was just like, hey, we're going to establish this LED. We're going to charge them out a certain amount of money and, you know, to these homeowners and they're, you know, on their tax bill. And ultimately the money runs out. So we've changed that as a council and as a, and as an organization of the city, we've changed that when we went to CFDs. We want, we've gone to community facility district now that, you know, they're, so I would say if the expectation for them is an A, then the expectation for the other ones should be the same. But I, I say that just in, in a comment. The other thing I would, the only other thing I would, I, I'm all in favor for this balloting. I'm, I'm looking to you to tell me what you think is probably the best way to move forward. I don't know that we can do all 17 at one time. But we can get started. And, and if you maybe have four or five or whatever, that number that you have that are in critical need or that, you know, we, we start with first, I, I'm willing to do that. But if we have to wait for every election cycle to do this, we wouldn't do another one for two years. For one year?
Every year you can do it. Yeah.
So every year?
Yeah. Cause they get, you know, they go to the county.
Ultimately, it could be a three or five year period to where we get those 17 LEDs under, um, under guidance. So that's, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Brad, is there a way that we could send the ballots out to where it says vote yes or no at the top? And then have an explanation as what an A is, what a B is, what a C is? And they're either voting yes or no at the top and then they're going through and marking, they'd like to have an A district. They'd like to have a B or whatever and have it. And then we tally up based on first, how many yeses and how many nos we have. And then go through and tally how many said As, how many said Bs, determine it that way?
Well, the ballots are yes or no. Um, some of what you're asking though, can be done during the outreach and education portion. Because you could go, um, let's just, I'm pretending now. A, a postcard goes out, says, hey, we're interested in, in balloting. You're currently at a Level C, which means whatever it means, right? We, um, are, are interested in improving the aesthetics and the beauty of your neighborhood. Please attend a meeting. Okay? Just, just in a sample. We'll meet at the cul-de-sac at wherever, on this date, this time. We invite the, the, the folks there. I, I mean, we have waters, we have refreshment, we, you know, we have balloons and we have the whiteboards and, 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 and it's organized. And that's where I think then you really have the opportunity to, to educate and answer questions. So, you know, and to answer Councilmember Kyra's questions, my guess would be five or six districts to ballot.
Do we, will we have a number that we're, like the amount that we need to raise per district to get us to the different levels?
Currently, we do not.
But will we? When we get to the outreach part? Cause I don't feel like.
Absolutely. That's going to be very critical.
Most about the like bottom dollar amount. Like what is this going to, what is this actually going to impact me? I think the people are going to.
So the process would be, we literally look at the spreadsheet on, on the engineer's report. We know our deficit districts. We look at that. What is their current, you know, assessment? What would it take them to get from a D to a B? Let's just say. It would take $13.28 a month. I, I just make that up. And so, okay, for $13.78 a month, are you willing to do that to have your neighborhood look much better? And you show them a C, you know, you show them levels of service. And you show them pictures of their district. See, it's very specific to what they see when they drive in and out every day. So they need to see the corner, you know, off the main road, like, yeah, I've driven by there a bunch of times and I, I, those bushes don't look too good. So I think that's why you need to be specific to that district and you're customizing the outreach by district. That's why I'm just hesitant to say, let's just do all 11 and see what happens. I don't know if we have the, the staff, the energy and the resources to successfully ballot 11 districts. That's, this is my opinion only. And I, I just put that there that I'd rather be intentional, very, very intentional and have success and then, and build on it. But again, council's direction, we're happy to do whatever council directs.
Brad, do you foresee us, in what direction, going from the triple Xs, hopefully to get them to a C? Or those Cs, hopefully to get to Bs that are really close? I mean, which direction from the very bottom to somewhat move up? Or the ones that are super, super close to like a AB rating that is not on escalators that we foresee in the future, like?
I, I think we have to look at it.
Cause I'm saying if we're going to do five, now if we do five districts, are those the five, I mean, how many triple Xs do we have?
We have nine.
Nine triple Xs?
There are some, some districts that have multiple sections within a district. And so I'm counting, so it may be one, but it may have two, like areas of triple X.
Okay. So like in the district that was presented, you have railroad, railroad frontage that along the railroad tracks, we are a level of service of a D. That that's the like 20 some, that they just go 20 weeks out of the year, make sure the, you know, the grass is down. So it's not a fire hazard or whatever. There's brush or something like that. But then there's other parts that we were As, but now we're going to be a B. So that's what you're saying that because of those different components?
Yes. But so there's seven funds affected with triple Xs.
Okay. Seven funds affect.
Seven districts.
Seven districts that are affected that are currently have been downgraded to a triple X in which they're getting no service, no water. What about the streetlights?
No, some of them are, do have water. Um, but there are at least four, I believe, with no water and triple X.
Okay. And just also a clarification, the electricity is coming out of the LEDs as well. Southern California Edison charges the electricity. So when we're saying that there are triple Xs, the streetlights are still staying on and who's paying for that?
Fund, the district.
Okay. So we're not going to say.
On some of them, we had, we chose landscaping and water or one or the other. But beyond that, they weren't.
Okay. So when I hear triple X, that means no service at all. That's where.
When we're talking about services, we're talking about clean cut.
Clean cut services. Okay. Gotcha. Yes. Councilman Martinez.
What's your recommendation? My recommendation would be to go to, to take a good look at deficient districts. Get the data we need. Choose a five, six, um, as kind of a happy medium. Put our eggs in those baskets, develop the strategy, develop the campaign, identify the, you know, all of that part. Design the postcards, you know, get the right consulting firm on to be able to help us with that thing, those, those items. And then craft our message, you know, because again, this is all scripted, um, to go out into the districts. And again, for five or six districts, that's, that's a lot of time and a lot of work.
Brad, who's paying for the consulting firm? Is it the district that is paying for it or is it the, our general fund?
It's part of that administrative fund that you saw that comes out of that, um, assessment. So ultimately this is not general fund dollars. It is district funded dollars. So, and, and when we talk about, you know, re-scoping of Willdan's agreement, that will be a cost saving measure from that contract that then can be, um, uh, consulted for marketing outreach, right? So we trade kind of that money from one professional services to another.
Okay. So like for instance, those triple Xs that we have, that they're also going to incur the cost of the balloting. So it's going to get worse before it gets better.
Yes, it will incur. Again, I don't know the exact amount.
Yeah, I don't, whatever the amount is, is that they're at a negative balance. They're going to go deeper in the negative balance because they're paying for these services. City's going to upfront the money and they're going to pay us back or if they're not.
That comes from the assessments we receive from the county?
Some of the assessments that we receive will still be in a negative. With the geofencing, we can, in the geofencing, we can get their phone numbers. We could get their emails.
No.
That's that. We can't get those phone numbers.
No, no personal information.
No personal information.
All we know is a person crossed the geofence, right? We, we know where they came from, where they went to, how long they stayed. And then extrapolates based on data, you know, median household income, um, various factors.
Is there like text messaging that we could utilize, you know, that it might be cheaper than a postcard, but we could text message people in that district? I mean, we've used it for campaigns and stuff like that sending out, um, you know, when we were elected, you know, is that something?
I don't know of a database with, with, with phone numbers to be able to text. Um, is there one out there?
County Office of Elections.
Possibly. Um, so I think that, you know, those are things we need to find out.
Do we know how much a consulting firm would cost?
Uh, no, we don't. We, we do not have a hard proposal. We've just kind of, hey, would you guys, you know, could, could you do this?
What all would the consulting firm do for us?
They would design the postcards. They would design all of the materials. They would, um, craft and, and design all of the, you know, the visuals for the outreach meetings. And, you know, from, from colors to sizes of font, to all of that. It, it's a campaign.
I'm just thinking, I feel like we're over complicating this thing. Like, I feel like all anybody needs to know is, hey, the reason the flower beds look like crap is because this was established a really long time ago. We could say it much more beautifully and professionally. And this is why we're coming to you today to see if you are interested in paying a little bit more property tax. We'll have numbers. I just feel like there's just, this is kind of like where government can be a little frustrating because I think we're making it way too hard than it needs to be when you start talking about hiring consulting firms. I'm like, ugh. Like, at what point is enough enough? And can we do this in-house? And it just seems like we're going at it. Like, I go at it the approach that I think most people are going to probably like this idea because I think most people want the city of Hanford and the city that they reside in, in their neighborhoods to look nice. I think that's pretty obvious. Um, so I feel like we're over complicating it and making so many hurdles. Because if we want to do five or six per your recommendation, how are we going to decide? Because Travis just informed me that five of those LEDs that are deficient and in horrible condition are in my district. So I'm not going to be like, oh, sure, let's do a bunch in everybody else's. I'm like, no, I want my district's. And I'm assuming Travis says he's got five. He's going to want them too. And the other council members have much less. So I just feel like if we're going to do an outreach, why wouldn't we do it more broadly to the city of Hanford? And the thing about it is, does anybody even, mail is so outdated. I feel like there's other less expensive ways to get ahold of people and find out what they want. Like, I understand the balloting, I'm assuming has to be done by mail in this specific way so that it's fair. But in terms of the outreach, because we can't get people to come to fun events, how are we going to get them to come to a meeting about possibly raising? I just feel like there's probably better ways that we could get the information out there that aren't as arduous, that people would actually see.
I agree with the Vice Mayor on, no, I'm not really a fan of, you know, hiring a consulting firm for this. I think, you know, our, you know, knowledge of people in our district, finding those movers and shakers in those, um, those districts, we can, we can create some, we could create some cost savings for us, you know, instead of hiring a consultant firm. I mean, just getting that information out, whether we use the social medias that we have for our own districts or, um, we use the city's social media, whether we, you know, shoot a quick video of ourselves and explaining what we're doing. I think we can get that out, get the, the buzz out a lot quicker and a lot faster because it, they have connection with each one of us in our district. They voted for us. So they know who we are. I think we can make that contact, um, and that outreach for them. And I, I agree, I agree. I think the, the consultant firm would be a little bit too more. I don't want to charge so much more for, that goes on these districts that are already in the negative and then be like, hey, now we're going to, you know, be in the positive. So, but I mean, I have five districts. Everybody else has. But I mean, I have five districts, everybody else has two, Nancy and I have five. And that's, that's the seventeen total. But of the eleven, you know, we're, we're in the deficits, yes.
Well, another, another thing that I was thinking too is, there's going to be certain neighborhoods that have a higher propensity of having tenants in there versus homeowners, too. I mean, if you're taking and sending, you know, and if they're tenant-occupied, you're going to have less chance of somebody showing up in a park to see what it is.
And it's like saying, oh, I'm sorry.
Is it, do you send out off of the tax roll from Kings County? So, it wouldn't just go to anybody who lives in that neighborhood, correct? It would be, because you said it was just for property owners?
Correct.
Some property owners I find, too, are living over in other countries, too. They're gonna come.
Ty, you mentioned that you have a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I've got a question for staff. So, staff, when's the last time there was a successful ballot?
I do not know that answer. Not in my five-plus years. And I think it dates back further.
And the council asked that question because, over the years, I recall the city has attempted this particular approach and procedure. And to my recollection, I don't recall the city ever being successful with any attempt to increase an LED assessment. And I'm highlighting this because staff is coming to you with a unique approach to it, because the efforts in the past, including the last effort, which entailed a number of council members actually going door-to-door in these LED districts, proved to be unsuccessful, yes. So, I, I've personally seen staff getting information out by mail, I mean, the old, old days, that proved unsuccessful. Last effort, again, we had individual council members armed with information, going door-to-door, trying to explain to residents the purpose of this balloting process. And unfortunately, even that proved to be unsuccessful.
What do you suggest?
Well, again, I'm just highlighting that what staff is coming to you with is a unique approach. And a unique approach may be appropriate in light of what has occurred in the past. And again, looking toward the past, those efforts have been unsuccessful. In my recollection of, of the ballot results, those results were not close.
Whenever you're saying they're coming at it with a unique approach, what's the difference in this approach versus in the past?
They're looking at potentially using a consultant to, to put together information that the consultant feels would be enlightening for property owners. I think part of it could be how you message it.
Do we have, do we have successful results that this company can take, and this marketing firm can tell us that they've had in make, passing this through in other towns? Have they told you any?
We do not have a list of consultants. We've talked to one consultant.
No, but has, has he given you a six?
That was involved in the Measure H campaign.
Okay.
They, they've kind of branched off to a subset, no longer with Randall, but we're very familiar with Hanford and, and the successful campaign that we did for that. But we haven't got to the point of what would the charge be? What would the scope of work be? Because we'd have to define exactly and go out to bid. We'd have to do that soon, to be in line with the timeline that we want. We don't have to accept any bid, right? At the end of the day, we could look at the bids and say, they want a Maserati, and we want a Chevy. Like, no, but I think if we can craft the scope of work and scope of services, well, I think we can narrow that down.
And I just, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I, I, great question, Ty. And while you were speaking, like, I thought I'd been having kind of really came to fruition in my head. I think, like, I know my, for myself, I never knew that we, as property owners, were paying for the landscaping. I think a lot of times, we've, when you aren't really in the ins and outs of government, you think that it's, you're paying your taxes, and it's like an all-in price. And you, and so, I think a lot of people are thinking, like, you should be maintaining these anyway. What do you mean, I'm paying for it? So, I think even just getting that outreach and that information out there is going to be an eye-opening for people. I don't think that's necessarily going to change their mind, because I feel, I think there's a general feeling of there's a lot of nickel and diming, constantly adding on new taxes. And people just feel like, when's, when's enough, when is enough enough? So, I think that you're going to find either way, any type of outreach. So, I just, I don't know. I would love to know if we have, if we've ever been successful. And, and also, what other cities have been successful? What have they done? Who have they hired? I guess I'd have to really know more about the cost and exactly what these consultants would, would, would do for us, because Ty has a point. If we, if we find out that, I mean, you have the knowledge of the last five years, but I'm talking about prior to that. If we find out that we've never successfully done that, and that's why we have so many in the three-X discontinued service range, then we might, then, yeah, that might be something we do need to invest some money in upfront to get a better-looking community. I feel like I, I have those questions before I would really know.
And I would like to have, like, a future study session on this as well, where you bring back these districts, the deficient, the deficient districts. And, you know, so we can look at, how far are they deficient? Where are they at triple X, FD, where, you know, where those are located? And so, we could see the numbers, to see, you know, if we're, if Brad is recommending that we go with five, you know, which one do we have the best, you know, best possible options of probably, you know, winning those over and bringing them in?
So, we can show the success to the following ones?
That's, that's what staff's doing. They're, they're looking for direction from us to--
No, but I'm saying it's also coming back, back with that information, because they mentioned about bringing back, you know--
We're not going to pick the LEDs that are going to go. They are, that's what we have staff for. The question is, do we want to put it, get it out and go to ballot to have these LEDs to do it? I think that's, we, are we in favor of that? And if we say, yeah, then we tell them, hey, go forth and conquer, and let them put the plan together and move forward with it. I don't, I don't want, I don't want to be sitting up here picking what LEDs we're going to address first. I think that's where we're going to rely on these experts down here to tell us, hey, we're going to tackle, instead of six, we're going to do four of the eleven, and we're going to get four of the eleven out and get it on the ballot, and let's do the proper campaign and get them passed and move forward.
The comment was made, bring back deficient districts. And so, I thought that that was the initial reaction is to--
I mean, I'm, I'm all in favor of moving forward with, you know, this going to a ballot. And Brad, I mean, you know, to me, at least, the way I look at it is, you're going to, you and your staff and the experts sitting here at table are going to tell us which ones are the LEDs we should tackle first, what we should do, look to achieve. That's the message we need to get out to the community. The sooner we can do that, the better we can do it, the more information we can get out, you know, is, is going to be, help us be successful. So, that's what I would recommend.
Brad, back in nineteen ninety, whenever they first built the, they, Syntex Mangano is who did Pine Castle Neighborhood. They were out of Visalia. They used to, all the owners and everything lived over the lakes in Visalia. They built a lot of neighborhoods over in Visalia, okay? If you reach out to Visalia, they probably have, there's probably other subdivisions that were done by Syntex Mangano. And they would take and know how they've addressed it, because that was one of the first neighborhoods around here that was built like that neighborhood was. It was kind of a unique thing coming to Hanford.
You happy to reach out to the city of--
And the next one that they did was Stonecrest. That was the next following neighborhood that was done like that. Prior to that, it was, what would happen is people would buy their lot, pick their architect, and build their house, is how most of the neighborhoods were done.
And Brad, you also mentioned the establishing the CIP projects for the district exceeding the thresholds. What direction do you need from council regarding?
So, I, if we can, I'd like to go back through one through five, just real kind of quickly, and see if we have council consensus, by-numbered recommendations. That way, we're very clear, just like, are we all--
That's where I was heading in that direction, yes.
Thank you very much. So, number one is basically to re-scope Will Dan's agreement. The reason I say don't terminate it, because I think they have expertise that can help us. But we're going to remove the engineer's report, which happens to be number two. That will reduce the cost of that contract, because that's a big part of that, and potentially could be put into outreach marketing, okay? So, one is direction on number one.
Okay, so the re-scoping of Will Dan's agreement, because Will Dan could possibly do the balloting, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, are we okay with re-scoping their agreement? Council, do we have consensus on that? Right, so we have that consensus on re-scoping the agreement, where they won't do the engineer's report, but the cost savings possibly could go for, or towards the balloting process? Okay.
So, one and two there.
One and two is the annual engineer's report to be done by city staff and the finance departments. Council, do we have consensus on that as well?
Yes.
All right, so number three, the deficient districts. That's, that's a little different than the one that's on our staff report. Okay, so I'm looking up here.
We've updated this just a little bit with different comments.
Okay, so I'm looking at--
Yeah, yeah, we did, we did some, some updating. I think three speaks a bit about the process that we would go through. One, to identify which are the districts we want to ballot. Develop that outreach, you know, execute it, and then ballot. So, that's our strategy with, at this point, undisclosed number of districts.
Okay, so undisclosed number of districts. And I'm, do you need councils, you know, when you go the outreach and education marketing campaign, when we go out to the neighborhoods, do you need council to be a part of that as well? Is that what you're looking for when we're doing these deficiencies and going through this timeline?
Again, I would leave that to the experts.
Okay.
The folks that do that. But if council feels otherwise--
I was just gonna, I'm just making--
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that.
Okay. So, council, do we have consensus to go along with this timeline? Hopefully, have ballots by April, where we can get, have the reports prepared for the engineer's report in July?
That's correct.
Yes, okay, so we have consensus on that. Number four, for the financially sound districts, establishing a comprehensive capital improvement, is that something that staff would do and then they would bring back to council?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to develop the criteria.
Okay. Is this the criteria of, like, what every neighborhood, like, every neighborhood in the LEDs park should look like? Or kind of like, have some of the amenities?
Financially, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, if they look, you know, healthy fund balances that meet the reserve threshold. So, if some catastrophe happened, they have the money there to do that. But there's an excess amount that could be reinvested into the district, and that would be developed through this CIP list, very similar to our, our CIP list. But this would be specific to districts. And we would reach outreach to the neighborhood and the residents to see what they would like to see.
I give those local neighborhood parks, if drinking fountains bad or whatever, and they want to use some of that money to do that, or to replace, you know, playground activity or playground equipment, things like that, then they can plan for that.
All right, so we are, do we have a consensus on item number four? All right, so staff, we have consensus. And number five, establishing an LED working group, I definitely agree on that. So, we can have all you guys in one room and, you know, room where it happens, make, make things-- All right, so, at this time, this is consensus, but I'd like to go to public comment. If there are any public comments of any information, or people would like to address the council or this agenda item?
Dennis Hamm, I live here in the city, and I have a few suggestions. If you are going to go door-to-door and talk to people, I would suggest that you have a map in your hand so that you know who you're talking to. Are you talking to the actual property owner, or are you talking to a renter? So that you know that you're going to get valid information. And having over forty years of experience in the title business, I would, I say that you need to check with the county recorders off, I'm sorry, tax collector, because on the tax rolls, they usually have two addresses. One address is the site address, the property location, and the other one is where the, the tax bill is being mailed. That way, you know if it's a rental or a property owner.
Thank you, great input.
Judy Scott, Hanford. I think the most important thing I can impress upon you in this thing is listen to your staff. You pay this group a lot of money right here. They know a lot of things, they're very brilliant. So, listen to them, let them do their job. A consultant can help with a lot of things that you don't think about. I'm going to use my example as running for city council. I had no idea what I was doing. I learned a lot of things. I learned what I should have done. I learned that I went to seventy-five percent of my knocked-on doors. That took a lot out of me. If you guys are going to go knock on doors, be, be, be prepared. Do you have time? Does our staff have time? If you wanted to do all eleven, I was going, wow, that's a lot of work. And I'm sure Brad would say the same thing. But the consultant can tell you what's been done in the past, what's going to work. They know all the little nuances that's going on right now, as far as how people are getting their information, you know, when they can get, when they're getting it, what to do and how to do it. I, I really think that's important. And the most important thing is let your staff do your, do their jobs.
Right, are there any other comments? Seeing none, council, do you have any other questions or comments? All right, so, at this time, thank you, staff, once again. Thank you for your in-depth report, and you'll be coming back to us when you need to come back to us, correct? All right, so at this time--
Great job, you guys.
Thank you.